Okay, friends, let's get started. My name is Rick Upford Chase. I'm the mayor here in Newport, Vermont. And I haven't met everyone in the room, but I've met most of you now. And I'm really glad to be with you this evening. And we have the members of our task force that's called the Financial Reporting and Fiscal Practices Task Force. It's been meeting since, goodness, roughly the last week of March, first week of April. They've met almost every week on Friday afternoons at 4:00. How's that for a scintillating time of the week to have talks about finance? And this group has done its best to try and sort through a wide variety of things that we didn't fully understand four months ago when we started. And they kind of take them one at a time and try and chart a course forward. And they've made a series of recommendations to the city council, some of which council had the authority to act upon and has already done over the last couple of months. A lot of the advice in council that this group has received has come from Chip Sterns, who works for NEMRIC, the New England Municipal Resource Center. I think I finally got through that, Chip, without stumbling over this time. NEMRIC is the software system, the company, the non-- is it a nonprofit? It's not a nonprofit. It's the company that provides software management for most of the municipalities in the state of Vermont. And one of the early things that we did as a task force was to call NEMRIC to say, what things are we doing that we could be doing more effectively if we fully understood the tool that we have in front of us? And by the end of that first call, I remember it well because I was sitting with sketchy cellphone service down near Bennington, I think, on a trip somewhere. But by the end of that first call, two things were really evident. One was that, as Chip has now said to us several times since, you've kind of been using NEMRIC as a glorified check-writing software system, and we can do a lot better with that system. So that was one. And two, it wasn't Chip that night who said it, but there was someone else on the call from NEMRIC who said, are you aware that we have a habit, we have the ability to contract with municipalities when they have lost a finance person or they have some special need to provide consulting services? Which kind of blew, I think, all of us away. And so we investigated that over the course of the next couple of weeks. And by, I think, the latter part of April, we had hired NEMRIC to provide financial consulting services. Chip has worked from afar until today, actually. This is the first time I met Chip in person. He came up because we're working on the city's audit this week. But he has been pretty dedicated in his effort to try and sort through many, many issues that are before us. And he spent a lot of time-- really, he spent almost the entire time over the last several months focusing on our balance sheets, making sure that we say we know three things. What are they, Chip? The three things--
What do we owe, what do we worth?
Say it again.
What do we have, what do we owe, what do we worth?
What do we have, what do we owe, what are we worth, right? And try to give us numbers on our balance sheet that we can totally rely on. So I have great confidence in our balance sheet as of the end of fiscal year 2425, that we just finished on June 30. And the task force and the council have received regular briefings from Chip. Over the last six weeks, Chip has been at three consecutive meetings of the city council to review our balance sheet with us. So that's about as far as we've gotten. There is a lot more work to do, just to be clear about that. We have a lot of work to do kind of as a deep dive into the budget that we've already passed for this year to make sure we fully understand that budget and to make adjustments wherever necessary to make sure that we will finish this year in the black, that under no circumstance will we finish this year in the red. So that's a lot of the next step. And then, hand in hand with that, Chip is going to begin working with us to reform our 30-year-old general ledger, chart of accounts, to both to simplify them and make them easier to understand by the average person and by our city council, and also to make them more sophisticated in the ability to slice and dice the data that we can get out of NEMRIC. I say anything that I should have sort of said differently there, Chip?
No, I don't know.
All right, thank you. Yes, Karen?
Do you have the task force members--
I'm just about to do that.
Okay. To sort of give us a hint of what your expertise is--
I will absolutely do that, too. Yeah. So all of that is to say, that's background for the work that the task force has been doing and for the advice-- kind of where the advice has been coming from that the city council has been taking action on. And tonight, the specific thing that we're going to be working on is to review the five articles that have been warned for a ballot initiative on a special town meeting by Australian Ballot to be held on August 12. And so I'm going to ask each of you to introduce yourselves. And then we're going to go back through, and I'll have-- each of the task force members is going to introduce one of the articles. We'll review each of those articles. And then we'll open it up to Q and A. And we can go any direction you want. We can go back to any one of those articles individually. We can talk about the whole package. We can talk about things we haven't covered in the FAQ that you have in front of you. And we'll do our level best to answer your question, or if we don't know the answer, to say, we'll find out and then make it clear what's going on. Okay? So Carter, would you start, please, just by sharing a little bit about yourself?
Good evening. Thanks, everybody, for coming out today and just giving a hoot about your municipality and public financing. I am on the city council, just elected this past March, so thank you. As far as background and what I bring is, I am a grants manager. I handle a couple of them for Newport, but mostly across the NEK. As far as municipal budgeting, this has been a quick education, but I've had open ears in all the conversations. So I appreciate being here.
Thank you, Carter. Travis?
So my name is Travis Gaines. I'm the administrative head of school at United Christian Academy here in Newport. And the item that I guess I bring to the table here for this particular task force is just a heart for financial stewardship. When I entered into this position with UCA, we were in the midst of a fairly large budget deficit and with some really careful work and difficult choices at times. But persistence, we've been able to reduce our deficit by 50% for next year, and we were able to finish in the black this year. So that's one of my big focuses here on the task force, is just making the most of what we have as far as our revenue goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
I'm Lori Graham. Moved to Newport in 2006 with my family. And very shortly after, became involved in the community. I've been a part of many of the community-wide focus groups that we've had over the years. And my background currently is, I'm a business analyst for an agricultural credit bank in South Carolina, shifting there from my work with Yankee Farm Credit, now called Farm Credit East here. And I knew that I wanted to get involved because I have been involved, because I've been to meetings, I go to council meetings, I'm paying attention, I'm having conversations with people. And my abilities as a business analyst might not be specifically finance. I like to say I'm not an accountant, but I play one at 4:00 on Friday afternoon. And that's really just because I can pay attention. And I'm learning. And I'm asking a lot of questions. A lot of people in the community are talking to me and want some answers. And it's just important in my background to be able to do that. And I'm also an IT person. I was actively involved in an IT changeover at my bank from a 30-year-old loan system to something more current. And so that's, you know, that's where I am in all of this.
Thank you, Lori. Susie?
My name's Susie Small. I'm a financial advisor with Community Financial Services Group here in Newport. I have 18 years in financial services experience, none of it being in the municipal arena. But what I do have experience with is working with families about budgeting, staying, planning for the future. And I think the lens that I have been approaching this with is, you know, let's not live within our means. Can we try to live below our means and figure out how to right this ship? So it's been an education every Friday afternoon at 4:00. Definitely getting an accounting, you know, feel. Certainly glad I did not choose that as a profession. So thank you very much, and I look forward to your questions.
Hal?
Howdy, y'all. Hal Roedberg, the newest resident in the area. So I've been here about 10 months. And shortly after moving here, decided that I wanted to get involved because that's what makes good communities. In the way of background, I have a master's in finance and spent five years in New York as an analyst. But subsequently got away from that and been in software sales since then. And my whole goal here has been to, you know, just add a set of eyes and ears and ideas without having any, you know, thing to carry behind me. So just do the best we can so that we can move forward and, you know, make this community that other people like myself would want to move to full-time and make this their home. So happy to be here.
Thank you. So just a couple of ground rules, ground rules for the evening. The first is that both the task force members and the members of city council over the last four months have made a concerted effort to walk a fine line in which we name clearly how we got to where we are and do not find ourselves pulled into a this person did that or this person should have done that kind of conversation. And we will ask all of you to follow those same guidelines tonight. If you feel the need to name someone specifically that you're upset about, I'm going to ask you to stop because it's not helpful to us in our judgment. We've had plenty of that going on for some significant time now. And what we all want to do is focus on what we have as a situation in front of us and where we're going to go from here. Further, if you find yourself needing to use the word stupid in a sentence or a question, you may want to rethink it because these people are all volunteering their time, as are basically the members of council as well. And I have been unbelievably impressed over the last four months or so at the level of dedication and the amount of time that the members of this task force and the Water and Sewer Task Force and the other two task forces that we've put together as council, I've been so impressed with them. And I would ask that you treat people with respect. If you have a good question, you are welcome to-- if you have any question, you are welcome to ask him. All I ask is that you ask it respectfully the same way we've tried to do with one another. And finally, we've got at least two other council members besides Council Carter in the room. Kevin Charbonneau is the council president and is here. And Andy, you're here somewhere, right? Andrew Touche is here. And the only council member we're missing this evening is John Minette, who had another engagement. Okay, are we ready to start? All right, then I'm going to ask us to have each of the task force members just stand and refer-- they're going to be walking through the first several pages of the FAQ that you have. And I think Travis, you were going to begin, right?
That's correct. So again, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. My wife and I, we've been here for about two years and are eager to participate in the community. And as Rod-- excuse me, as Hal said, make this a place worth being in, you know, a great community. So I have the-- one of the easier jobs here, talking about Article 1, which concerns a fire engine funding. The original loan amount for that engine was $800,000. That was approved in March of 2022. The first engine was due to be delivered, but due to some noncompliance in the specifications that were requested, that engine was rejected. And so it's now due to be delivered this fall, end of October, early November. The final cost, including equipment for the truck, is now $875,000. And that leaves us a $75,000 shortfall that requires approval. Again, the $800,000 for the original bond has been approved, and we're just looking to get the final $75,000 for equipment approved at this time. The city council is seeking long-term financing for that bond. And the good news is the fiscal year 2026 budget does include the debt servicing for that. And it's close to the correct number for the full amount of the bond, $875,000. So if there is any difference, it should be very negligible. And that amount is $67,880 per year, which is the-- that's the debt servicing number for that. There were past capital funds that were designated, however-- or they could say they were budgeted. However, those funds were not-- those designations were not funded in the actual budget. So there is no outstanding lump of money just sitting there able to be put toward this, even though it was addressed in earlier budgets to try to accumulate that. That had to go to other outstanding liabilities that the city had. And basically, without approval of Article 1, what we're looking at is a reduction in either general operating funds in 2026 or fire department funds to make up that shortfall to avoid us going into deficit spending again.
Yep, that is it.
Thank you so much.
So we'll come back for questions. So if you have questions or comments about any of these, please note them, and we'll come back, okay? So let's see. Lori, I think you were going to describe number two.
So Article 2 is actually relatively similar to Article 1. In the fall-- excuse me, the spring of 2021, the citizens of Newport approved about $4.985 million for the East Side Water Tower. And that amount, that total amount, actually then was to be less than any grant funding that came in and the use of the ARPA funds. So we have operated that construction project using ARPA funds, using the grant funding and a construction line of credit. Our situation is that at some point, the actual application to the Vermont Municipal Bond Fund was never completed and sent in. So the situation is, basically, for the city of Newport, due to our charter, we cannot actually extend the construction line of credit past one year, which will be this fall. So-- and because we haven't actually applied for the bond, which was already approved, we are taking a bond anticipation note-- I'm calling it a bridge loan, same thing-- to get us from paying the construction line of credit in this fall to the acceptance and awarding of the bond by the Vermont Municipal Bond Fund. We aren't asking for 6 million. We're asking for 3. And what has happened is because of the ARPA funds-- remember that the first amount was 4.985, minus the other things-- we are asking for up to 3 million to pay off the construction line and the rest of the water tower expenses. And there is a possibility-- we don't know this for certain yet-- that we'll come in a little bit under that. That's the hope we'll seek. But it will not be more than 3 million. And this will take us, as I said, from paying off the construction line of credit until we actually are awarded the grant. Hopefully, April, possibly not until August by the Vermont Bond Fund. But this should take us through there. And then this note will actually be paid off at that point. So that's where we are.
Thank you. Hal, I think you were going to cover number three.
Three and five.
Oh, I think Susie was going to do number five unless you two talked about it.
I can do five, sure.
Am I doing four?
Just do three and five.
Okay, well, thanks all for showing up tonight and not bringing pitchforks because all of us are doing the best we can. Three and five really have a lot in common. They're based-- I'm going to talk a little bit about what they're based on, and then we can talk about what we're asking for. They're really based on an error in accounting and budgeting. We assumed that there was a certain amount of income coming in that was actually double-counted. So in Article 3, what we're looking to do is create a general obligation bond in the amount of $1.8 million to refund a deficit that we've created because over the past six-so years, we have done two things. One, we've had budgeting issue where we've double-counted income to the tune of $1 million-plus. And then there was deficit spending for about another $600,000. That's an aggregate of a number of things. That's where the $1.8 million comes from. Item 5 is-- item 5 here is where we're looking to approve a $220,000 increase in the amount of taxes. And once again, this is due to an error in budgeting caused by duplicate accounting for income. And we're just looking to cover that so that with the proposed goal of ending the year at least level or ideally in the black, we need to address that shortfall. So those are really three and five in a nutshell, real quickly. They're caused by the same issue. We're just dealing with-- number three is the past issue. Number five is what's currently being addressed with this year's budget.
Thank you.
All righty. So Article 4 is an ask for the voters for a $1 million bond to repay the deficit that the sewer budgeting process caused. So over the past eight years, Newport residents haven't seen an-- well, until recently. But they haven't seen an increase in your water and sewer rates. This created a deficit spending. And over time, that flowed through the reserves that the operations had. And now they have been deficit spending. So in the interim, the city's general fund has been offsetting those costs and using monies from the general fund to pay for the sewer fund. So where did that deficit spending come from? Again, part of the water and sewer rates that did not get a rate increase to reflect the actual costs of operating and maintaining our sewer plant. In addition, we did not-- will be misaccounted for revenue. So one example in the handout is when we used to take-- or take sledge from Casella. And so that remained in the budget even though we were no longer contractually doing that. So over time, this-- and also another thing that we, as city council, have been doing differently, again, thanks to Chip Sterns, we have been looking at budget-- budget balance sheets, excuse me, for the past handful of meetings. And through that, you can clearly see the due-to from others line in the sewer budget. And although council has taken some action to bring that number down-- sorry, the due-to general operating. So we have--
On the balance sheet?
On the balance sheet, yes. So we have taken some action to dwindle down that number, but this still remains. So we're asking the voters to basically offset that cost. And that will be paid over the year of the loan. So I'm sorry if I'm not as articulate as my colleagues.
Thank you. So we were pretty clear that we didn't want to monopolize the evening. We wanted to hear from all of you about what your concerns and questions are. So this is an opportunity to ask questions about things you don't understand or to offer suggestions about things that you think might benefit from further research on the part of the council or the task force members. We're happy to take those questions. I think if you want to just stand in place as long as you can project, please say your name. And then feel free to share your comment or question.
Karen Garrity, Newport resident. So there are two things I'm not hearing that would be helpful to get perspective on. The first being, what potentially are you looking at The first being what potentially are you looking at in the current budget that we can cut to alleviate some of the pressure from, on the taxpayers? And, you know, I see a few things in there that could be cut for sure. And I'm sure that others see that as well. The second thing I'm not hearing is when we elect officials to these positions, there's not necessarily the knowledge to run the city that comes with those folks. These are citizen legislators. And that's fine. This is not a critique of the people themselves. But we have a systemic problem and we have for a number of years. And I'm not pointing fingers at any one person. But I'm saying that our system in Newport does a poor job of preparing our leaders to do the job that they are elected to do. One of which is to have financial literacy in reading and understanding municipal budgets, which are different than other kinds of budgets. And so over the years, this is where wires get crossed. It's not done out of maliciousness. No one is embezzling. This is done simply with good people trying to do the right things with what they basically know. But that knowledge is insufficient in running municipal operations. So what I would like to hear from the council eventually, not tonight, because we've got enough on our plates, is what are we going to do as a community to cultivate the knowledge base for our leaders, for the people who are brave enough to step up and step into these public positions and take on this work so that they're well-equipped and well-supported to do the work that needs to happen? So those are just two sides, I think, of the same coin. But anyways, that's what I'm looking for.
Those are great questions. I'll just do a briefest of answers to the seating. And then as you suggested, I think they both invite deeper reflection. So first question about what can be cut in the current budget? I'll just admit to you that we've been pretty fixated on how we can, the six solvent through the end of the fiscal year. But we've spoken as recently as Friday afternoon, this last Friday, about the next step, which is that question about how we're going to do a deeper dive. I suspect that that dive will take us the next probably six weeks or so to try and do it as carefully as possible. Our goal would be if there are any adjustments that we think should be made, not to the budget, because we're not going to tinker with the budget that's been approved, but to our plan for spending or our financial projections. Our hope would be to take those to council by mid-September so that they don't, so that we implement any potential changes no later than the end of the first quarter of the year. So I think you're absolutely right. And that's something we're definitely talking about. And the council's been discussing that as well. Then the second question or point that you're raising, I think, is a really important one, which is that, you know, certainly I did not have the kind of preparation in reading municipal budgets when I became a part of the council. And I'm learning really, really fast, but I have a lot to learn. And I still find myself every day thinking, oh, that's not how I understood that. So the short answer is in the near term, that's why Chip's going to be coming to our council meetings and walking us through step by step, not just balance sheets, but over the coming months. The budgeting process will be carefully, we will have good instruction from Chip. Carter and I met on Friday with Kathleen Ramsey from Vermont League of Cities and Towns, who is something of an expert on municipal governance and in particular municipal budgeting. And we were working together to try and lay out some suggestions for the task force's consideration on how we could actually transform the entire budgeting process this year and next year to try and move us into something that is far more studied over time and transparent to the, and not just transparent to the community, but participative with the community. So our goal is this year, at the very least, that we start the budgeting process in September or at the very latest by the first of October. So we'll have a number of months to work on it together. And by next year, the goal would be to start a process much earlier in the year where we begin by coming to the community and asking about priorities and concerns that the community members have. Yeah, Lori?
I just want to add that-
Lori, I just have something to say.
Sure, absolutely. So I'll just add that I've had members of the community ask me certain questions. And I've had absolutely no problem going to Jim and Chip and getting and requesting invoices, information from particular line items in our budget, just so we understand what did we spend last year? And some of it has to do, like one particular had to do with the fire truck article. Just what were we spending, just one particular line item, what's in there? This was done, some internal stuff. So we actually have started looking at that. And as Rick said, I just want to point this out. It was really important for us to get past July 1 because the fact is we were, we were operating in a deficit. And if we'd gotten to July 1 and we'd still been in that deficit and we hadn't had the expertise of Chip, who was able to help us understand how our budget worked and ways to pull out the funds from different things to actually cover. I mean, we were $1.8 million owed to the bank on June 30. And we got there. And so that was our original goal, to be quite honest with you, once we sat down and realized where we were. So we are talking exactly what you said, Karen. We are looking.
We are going to look. That's our, that's our next step.
Anybody else on the task force wants to? Okay, other questions or comments? Go ahead. Yes, please stand and introduce yourself.
I'm Jennifer Bierling. I'm a resident of Newport and taxpayer. I'm in some ways going to echo what Ms. Garrity has said. This is a big chunk of money that you guys are coming after us for. You know, roughly $6 million. $3 million, I understand, is a short-term loan, but the other $3 million is not. That's half of a normal municipal budget. And what I'm not hearing is how are we systemically going to be putting safeguards in place that this does not reoccur? That's what I'm not hearing. And what I'm hearing in all of these articles is deficit spending, deficit spending, deficit spending, deficit spending. Why? It's like balancing your checkbook. You know how much money you have? And if you're going over, you kind of know if you're paying attention. And yet, here we are, $4 million or $3 million of long-term debt to cover deficit spending. Contrary to what was presented tonight, the additional $75,000 for the fire truck was funded. That was in the budget and we paid that money. We paid that money in taxes. It was spent on something else. And now you're looking to come to us to bail out the bad decision-making. And it doesn't set well with me. It just doesn't. I want to hear concrete systemic changes, safeguards that are going to be put into place to keep this from reoccurring. The council didn't catch any of this. The mayors, our last one was a CPA and-
You need to be careful. Let's just not go there.
But the same, with all, with the credentials that our last mayor had and held out to the public and with the recurrent, you know, claims of deep dives, didn't catch it. The city auditors didn't catch it. How am I supposed to have confidence if I vote yes on this to bail you guys out that this is not going to reoccur? And a simple, well, we're aware of it now and we're committed to it. The council and the mayor, they change. And just because I have a commitment from you, Mr. Chase, or the current council, doesn't mean that your successor, whoever he or she may be, is going to have the same level of commitment. I want safeguards in place. I want to hear about safeguards.
Thank you. So I'll just say, Jennifer, that I hear your concern. And first of all, I want to, I will take exception to one piece of that framing in particular. And that is, we are not asking you to bail out us. Council is not asking you to bail out this council. We are asking you to, along with all of us, take responsibility for the situation we currently find ourselves in. I get that that's painful and that it's distasteful. But I just want to be clear about the language, right? This is not an us and them. At this point, what we've got is a financial situation that is difficult that we're all going to have to work together to try and resolve. So that's of all of what you said, that's the only thing I really want to push back on in terms of framing. Having said that, the best we can do, in my judgment at this moment, is to make sure that in this coming year, we are not deficit spending. And the only way to get to that, for this coming year, that's before we even talk about '86, '87 and beyond, right? In order to get to that, we have to have reliable reporting that is relatively easy to understand, which as a member of council, I was begging for a year ago. And I have confidence that with steady, thoughtful work together, we can create that kind of reporting so that the council can fully understand what's going on. And anyone who chooses to come to a council meeting can be informed and try and understand, and understand it as well. In terms of safeguards, I don't know what to do, honest to goodness, I don't know what to do other than to make our, our financial record, our financial reporting as transparent and easy to understand as possible and to ensure that we have experts in the room who are reliable, who can give the council good advice. And from there, it's a question of all of us working together to try and hold that process accountable. So we will work at that. I guarantee, I commit to you that we will work on that for this year's budget. And we will be working to put together budgeting processes that are far more collaborative as a community in the future. And then we will have financial record-keeping in place so that anyone who wants to sit down and try and parse it can do so.
And what happens when your successor doesn't want to follow that?
Then we're going to have to correct that in the following election. That's true, in my judgment, that's true in any municipality in the country. That's, the check and balance in the system is that these people get elected every two years.
And a lot of damage can happen to them.
Without a doubt. Lori, I'm going to take another question or a comment from Mark. Go ahead.
Do I have to stand up?
Yeah. Who are you? Who are you?
My name, who are you? My name is Mark Scholz. I'm a taxpayer in Newport. How come we got in debt anyways? And how come we have to get a new fire truck? Because I saw all the fire trucks that are on Newport Parade. And I don't want my money going out there by it. And we paid some money up at the water tower too, so. So how can we, where did the money go afterwards?
Okay, got it. Thank you, Mark. So let's be clear, there are two ways that we got into this position and they both involved spending beyond our means. On the sewer side, the way that it took place is that we had costs going up the way all expenses do over time. And we had a lot, a significant loss of income that was really due to the fact that we, we gave up the Lichate contract with Casella, which amounted to about $185,000 a year. And when that took place, the council at the time did not raise sewer rates to cover the lower amount of income that we were taking in, nor did they raise rates over an eight-year period between 2016 and 2023, roughly. Roughly eight years. They did not raise the rates to cover mounting expenses. That's how we got into the deficit position on the sewer side. On the general operating side, there are two things that happened, at least two in broad strokes. One is what, who described this one, Hal? One is what Hal described, which is that the second line on our report, our, our financial reports is called state municipal tax adjustment? I think it's called?
Yes.
And that amount, starting back in 2018, '19, amounted to $100,000. And every year it's grown since then, so that this year it's $220,000. It's averaged about $175,000 a year over that period. In what I think was an honest mistake, in 2018, '19, someone recognized that as additional revenue. And in fact, it had already been counted as part of the tax income, the property tax income that was listed on a different line as income. And when you double count that income, it means that you don't raise your taxes high enough to cover all the expenses. And so that drove us at least $1.3 million of the general fund accumulated deficit comes from that series of errors that has lasted now seven years. That's one piece of it. The second piece of it is a series of decisions that were made around spending that basically were spending, it was spending that we didn't actually have the money for. And when we did that, we just drove the, the general fund deeper into a deficit position. So there's another, and this part, I can't tell you the specifics of it yet. We haven't gotten anywhere deep enough to know. But we know that there's another between $500,000 and $600,000 that if we go deep enough, eventually we'll figure out exactly what those errors were. But we're not prepared to try and delineate them at this point. Not because we have the information and don't want to share it. It's because we just haven't been able to go that deep yet with everything else we've been working on. But I have some confidence that those two things together are what created that $1.8 million accumulated deficit that we are asking voters for permission to deal with by spreading it out over a longer period of time instead of trying to pay it all off in one year.
Rick, can I add some?
Please, go ahead.
So as a new resident, I mean, a really new resident, probably there should be no one more upset than myself because I don't get, I haven't gotten to enjoy the benefits of no water rate increases over 10 years. But now I'm getting foot them and other such actions. And to give you all a little perspective, we've spent, what, 40 hours plus as a group? And the first thing we had to do was triage. We had to address the immediate situation of debt coming due, which we have recommended to council and I think we've done a good job of accomplishing. And then we need to build some time to make the budgeting decisions people are talking about. That's the idea of turning short-term debt into long-term debt so that it's serviceable. But a big part of it is now it's something manageable and we can address. Just because you have a long-term debt of 10 years, doesn't mean you have to take 10 years to pay it off. We can take the appropriate steps. And in our first meetings, to give you all some insight, we're like, what is this? And so there's been a lot of focus with Chip and Nemrick in understanding what exactly our numbers are, how they're set up. And actually, we're working this week on our chart of accounts so that it is transparent, so that you can get a budget that looks like something you can actually read. And I had to laugh about the comment about balancing a checkbook. I have a 16 and a 22-year-old. They don't know what the hell to do with the checkbook because it doesn't exist anymore. It's all immediate. So it's one of those things that it just doesn't exist anymore for kids. But what they're blessed with is an immediate idea of what's going on. And so we're trying to get a much tighter focus. But in the 40-plus hours that we've been together or so, I think we've made a lot of progress and we just need to spend more time. And that's what we're all committing to do, is spend more time digging into the questions of like, how did we get here? That's why I thank you all for not showing up with pitchforks because we're doing the best we can in the time we have. But know that the questions we've been asking as a group is, how did we get here? How did this happen? How do we budget? How do we understand it? How, who's going to be responsible? Because we're all volunteer participants. So when a city manager is brought on board, what are some of their focuses? And what are their mandates? So that we give, we get the right people involved there to be working on it full-time and focused on these problems. Because right now, we're trying to give guidance. But, you know, I can't even imagine what would have happened if this group hadn't gotten together. And I don't care if I was part of it or not, but if people like Travis and Lori and everybody here hadn't stepped up and said, hey, I'll dig into it and done this. But you all are asking, we're paying for past mistakes. So let's just accept it and move on. And we're going to have to do the best we can to fix it.
Thank you.
Rick, can I just add that regarding assurances? There's only so many assurances. I mean, you're kind of governed by the town charter. But these are mistakes that are, in some cases, nearly a decade old. It took years to discover them. But to the credit of Rick and the new council that's seated currently, the first thing he did was say, we, here are our major problems. And I don't have a good handle on everything that's here. And I want to tap the community and get the, the intellectual power that we need to, to take a deep dive and the hours because, you know, just the scant members of council and the mayor, you know, having other people to dive into these problems is a real force multiplier to try to get to the bottom of things. And the fact that one of his first acts was to create these task forces to investigate these errors. And now that we've found the Lichate miscalculation, the tax miscalculation, and have been able to, for all intents and purposes, cap those so we're no longer bleeding, you know, I hear the desire to, how did this happen? Let's fix it. But that's, that's exactly what Rick has gone about doing since he's been in office. And it takes a little bit of time to find these things, but that's our goal as well.
Thank you. So I just want to finish the other half of Mark's question before we move on. Mark, you also asked-
Fire truck.
What's that?
What's wrong with the fire trucks?
Yeah, what's wrong with the fire trucks we have? I'm going to allow other people to answer that question because honestly, the community answered that question in 2022. The decision about whether to borrow, to borrow money to buy a new fire truck was made three years ago. And all we're, and like so many other things that are before this council, that's not something that we're trying to tinker with. We're not going back three years to determine whether or not the community made a good decision at that point. We know we have a new fire truck coming and that we're supposed to take possession of it sometime around the month of October. And we have been told that the bill on that is likely to run in the neighborhood of $865,000. We have asked the voters, or we will ask the voters on August 12, for permission to borrow an additional $75,000 beyond the $800,000 that the voters approved three years ago to make sure that we have enough money to pay for that fire truck when it gets delivered. We will not pay for anything that doesn't need to be paid for. So the permission to borrow $875,000 is simply looking at what the kind of worst-case scenario would be. But we will be working over the next couple of months to make sure that we understand fully what we're getting, that we're paying for things that we said we were going to pay for and that we can, we will have the money at our disposal if necessary to pay for that fire truck when it arrives.
And we did, I'm not going to stand for this. We did ask, can we not take possession of certain things like police cars or fire trucks? You know, maybe things we can stretch out? And the simple answer was, you're going to burn yourself more if you don't than if you do. So we're in for a penny, we're in for a pound.
Lori, and then I'll take a question from John and then him.
So I want to remind you that the second half of the name of this group is fiscal practices. And, and just like the Water and Sewer Committee, who is already working on some things, one of the goals for this group, when we get to the next section, as we move along the road, is to put in place things, paper amendment, whatever it is we have to do, to say, this is the best fiscal practice for the city. Having, we know that the council is reviewing. We, we have good guidance and that will continue in some way, shape or form, whether it's with Chip or where it comes through, especially with the new chart of accounts that we believe will be much easier to, to be able to read. But that is also one of our goals, is to put, create the documentation that will go out into the future and say, we can't do this. I mean, you know, this has been going on since 2016. It has to stop now. And we, this is one of our goals.
I'll just add to that. In the interest of full transparency, if you haven't read about it in the paper, though it's been written about quite a bit, we also, council took out a line of credit to cover cash flow for our general operating fund in this fiscal year. And we, we received permission, council gave permission and Pesamsek Bank agreed to lend us $2.725 million as a, not a revolving, as a line of credit to cover cash flow throughout the year, basically saying, we're going to have a low period between now and November, for instance, when the next property taxes come in. And so how do we cover that? This is very standard operating procedure among municipalities. One of the conditions of that loan from Pesamsek Bank that the council was happy to agree to was that Nemrick is not going anywhere, that we've got Nemrick providing counsel to us over the coming months until the bank is satisfied, that we fully understand both our, our current situation and best practices for fiscal responsibility going forward. So I'm, I was pleased that they put that as a condition of the line of credit and thrilled that Chip and Nemrick. And just to be clear, while Chip has been the one working with us, our contract is with Nemrick. So there may be other people from the organization who come in to help us on different parts of the project. And if Chip takes early retirement because he wins the lottery or something, we'll find another way to help, to get help through Nemrick as well. John, I saw a question from you and then we'll come to you.
John Holler, city resident, former fire chief. I'd like to touch on two things. One, I want to go tell something that Karen said. And one of the things that I noticed during my tenure and being involved with the city for over 35 years and 15 years as chairman of the DRB and three and a half years as, as fire chief is a lot of the volunteer people that get involved with municipal governments, there's a saying, you don't know what you don't know. And in conversations with people that have been running for office over the years, one of the things that I've asked, and I watch a lot of council meetings, of the things that I've asked, and I watch a lot of council meetings, and I still don't see it happening, you have to ask questions. You cannot just blindly vote on things because somebody says it's a good idea and they sell you a really good program. And it sounds great. Sometimes you got to do the homework. You got to reach out and find out what you don't know. Okay? That's just going forward. $75,000 for the fire truck, I was instrumental in the original purchase, and if anybody asks questions, there's a lie, I'll be more than happy to answer that at any time. When I retired, I made it clear that I would be open to anybody at any time if anybody had any questions. Nobody's bothered to take me up on that. After I left, the department went to the council and asked for some change orders up to $75,000, I believe was the number, and it was granted. And at that point in time, the council said that they had the money in the budget. That's why they did not have to go to the voters. Well, seeing 9/11 in September and that they went in the fall, I knew there was no money in the budget, but nobody asked, and it got passed. Okay? So change orders were submitted, the truck was changed. The only question that I have with what you're asking for is, what I would like to hear is not to exceed the purchase price of the truck. And the reason I say that is I read an article in the paper that said the $75,000 was to purchase hose and equipment and notices and so forth to outfit the truck. All that was purchased in 2023 to be put on the truck when it came in 2023. So I don't know if you can change the language now, but it would go a long way to say not to exceed the sticker price of the truck.
That's really helpful, John, and I'm happy to have more conversation on the issue with council with you as well. The short answer is, I personally don't know what's sitting in the firehouse. But what I do know, what we do still have plenty of time for, though you're correct, we can't change the warning for August 12th. That warning is fixed. And what it asks for is up to a total of $875,000 that we could borrow in order to make sure that we fully meet the obligation.
Can I get the council's commitment that it'll be not to exceed the sticker price of the truck?
Well, you can't get it tonight. The council's not here. It's not a council meeting.
Well, going forward, can you bring that up?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And any other equipment that's not there, they can manage out of their budget.
Well, I don't know the answer to that. I don't want to imply anything tonight, because there's more for all of us to learn about that. So I appreciate your recommendation. I think the language is actually useful, and it's certainly something that we can explore. Thank you.
Anne next, and then we'll go to the middle there. Go ahead.
As usual, I have a number of questions. My name is Anne Shirello, but I'll only ask one to start, and if there's more time, later. So my most important question is, just a little while ago, oh, I meant to say, I've been at all the meetings of the financial committee, all the city council meetings as well, and as well the water and sewer committee meetings. And they are doing a fantastic job of getting us on the right track, without doubt. But then, of course, I do have a question. And you said just a little while ago, and you may have misspoke, but you did say, the community has to take responsibility, and then it was inferred as far as I was concerned, for what has happened over this decade. And I have to disagree with you completely. Various members of the community went to all the city council meetings, and we spoke, we asked questions that weren't being asked, as Mr. Holloman suggested, and most of the time, we were ignored. And in the reality, when we think of where we are now, our positions at the time and our questions were right on point, we took that kind of responsibility. Any number of the people, some of the people who have spoken have done that. So I think we took responsibility, but the major responsibility of us, we are the voters. And when we go to the polls, we elect those elected officials, the council and the mayor. And we need good information about who those people are. And when they have, in the past, for a decade, created problems in financials and in other areas, we've got to name names. And if you can't name names tonight for various reasons, we need the research that needs to be done so that we can at least put a name to who is responsible. So when they come back and they want to be voted in again, or they want other important positions in the city, we can say, uh-uh, I know the history here. That's not going to happen to us again. It's one of the ways that we can ensure that the systems that are put in place to stop this kind of thing never happen again. So please, don't decide forever that we're not going to know who's responsible, because we need the information. Our major role is voting, and we need to know who to vote for.
So, thank you, Anne. So I'll just say, I don't disagree with any of your analysis of what has taken place in terms of lack of responsiveness to hard questions that you and others were asking during a significant portion of that time that has led to some of the deficit that we're in today. I was in a lot of those meetings. I heard you and others ask those questions. I have huge respect for the fact that you kept showing up and asking them. All I can tell you is that there's no doubt in my mind that the council members currently, and I as mayor, are committed to full transparency. And I think we've proven it over the last four and a half months. There's been no conversation, really, about any of this financial question that has taken place behind closed doors. I think with the exception of an initial conversation with the attorneys, that we held an executive session so that they could update us on any actual legal actions that the city had before us. But every one of these task force meetings, as you well know, has not only been fully open, but has been fully participative. And the members of the community who've been sitting in the room have been invited to participate fully in the conversation. So I think we're doing what you're talking about, and I think I hear you appreciating that. The question of, you know, when is it and how is it useful to name names? I don't think that this FAQ that you all have in front of you pulls any punches. I think it's clear what the time periods were, what the problems were, and where mayor and council and other public officials did not pay enough attention or make what I consider to be judicious decisions. I don't see that we have anything to gain in our community right now by trying to call out specific individuals, because honestly, in my judgment, the responsibility is borne by more than just a couple of people. There are a number of people who should have been more invested in trying to get to those hard questions that somebody said we should be asking. So all I can tell you is that if I have anything to say about it as mayor, we are not going to devolve into finger-pointing and accusations about particular individuals in the community in any time between now and the next series of decisions we're going to have to make. I don't think, that's not the same thing as saying, I don't care how we got here. I care a lot about how we got here, and so does the council, and so does this task force. That's why we've been digging as deeply as we have. And anybody who's been paying attention, as you and many other people have been, are well aware of who the individuals are who are involved. I saw some other questions first. Actually, Karen, do you want to speak specifically to that before we move on?
I do.
Go ahead.
No, I listen to them. So I try not to bring a problem or raise a question without bringing a solution. And I didn't do it earlier because I thought maybe this isn't the forum, but just hearing what's been said in a couple of reasons, I'd like to suggest, because there's another vein here that's just under the surface that's feeding some of the issues we're running into as a city. And that's the difficulty we have with the issues of the charter and the statutes that are not reconciled in a way that's helpful. So there has been cherry-picking from charter, from statute, for people to work their way through the system in the way that they wanted to, versus not necessarily in the best way, in the best interests of the city. I'll just put it that way. So what I would like to offer is my time and effort, and to collect a group of people to form a commission appointed by the city council, to reconcile the charter and the statutes, to take the time to go through and point out where the issues and the inconsistencies are that cause us to stumble over our decision-making and our stewardship responsibilities. And there are several, and they're big ones. We are not the only community that has faced this problem. And the communities that have gone forward with the process and have solved it have done far better. So I would truly be interested, having lived through some issues with the council, with the city, and having knowledge from various communities, to say, let's form another task force, commission, whatever, approach the legislature once we've gone through and gotten the city approval to do so, and reconcile what it is that our operating principles and statutes tell us how to operate. Because as was pointed out by this task force, you as a council are bound by these processes. That's the social contract. When we as voters ask you to represent on our behalf and make decisions on our behalf, the social contract says, and the transparency comes from, the statutes that you are obligated, I don't point you specifically, Rick, but in this case, yes, you and the other council members, are obligated to follow, and to follow within the letter of the law. And we have tripped over that, many times not maliciously, sometimes yes, maliciously. So I will not say more than that, but yes. But this continues to cause problems in our operations. It is so clear. So as we work through our fiscal issues, we also need to work through at the government level, the operational principles by which the council has to operate. The second thing I will say is that this is, as defined in charter, a city manager council form of government. It's not a mayor council. The mayor is part of the council. It is written that the council does not necessarily say, it may appoint a city manager, meaning it's not obligated to. However, what I will say, in the intelligence of the founding charter members to set up our community that way, was that we could definitely hire somebody much better than we could elect somebody to have the skills necessary to run the city in terms of financial and operational pieces. It's much easier to find somebody to hire. But also, over the years, as council members come and go, the city manager should remain that constant through threat that carries that information so that we don't, and I saw it many times, we don't have to go back to lawyers for the same question over and over again. We need a city manager who knows these things and can advise the council. You need a city manager who will do research.
I can ask you, why do I?
Yeah. We need a city manager who will do research for the council. I raise this as an important point, because the deficits that the council has right now in terms of their knowledge base coming in, not a reflection on this group, but just you don't have it going forward, is that you have no one in that office, no one in that office, to provide you with the support that the council truly needs. The other thing I'll just raise, and you can answer it?
Yeah, I've got other people.
Absolutely. The other thing that I will raise is, I'm not hearing one word about the grants and how those are feeding into the financial health of this city. I personally wrote the million-dollar grant for the water tower that was intended to take away 1 million of the 5 million bonded for that. Effectively, that helps us now, because even though we're paying on the water tower using that grant, it gives us a little, it's not as much money as we need to be borrowing as we would if we didn't have that grant. So personally, I would like a report on the grants at some point, because I'm concerned about them. And I've written millions of dollars' worth of grants across Vermont and New Hampshire, so I know what I'm talking about. And I am concerned about the grants in Newport. They should help us financially. All we've done, we in the big we, is we've just ruined the worth of those grants by using lawyers to do a number of things. But anyways, I will say that would be a helpful thing to know, because it should help us financially.
Thank you. So in the briefest of terms, let me say, you will all be pleased to hear that while you may disagree about what a new charter or a revised charter should say, I have yet to meet anyone in the city of Newport who is satisfied that the current language of the charter is effective. So there is no doubt in my mind that we will be talking about charter review and revision sooner rather than later. And I appreciate the offer that you've made to be a part of that. I have not yet had any conversation with council or anyone else about how we would go about doing that.
I would like to offer to do...
So I heard the offer.
I would like to offer to do a presentation at a council meeting for...
I got it. I'm going to try and move us on, Karen, okay? So I hear that. It's not going to be in the next month that we're talking about that, but it's coming soon, and not sooner rather than later. Second, I hear the conversation about the kind of government that we're going to have here, and what is the role of the city manager, and what is the role of mayor and council. I guarantee that will be a part of the conversation about the charter revision as well. And third, regarding grants, I just want to say that I have worked now pretty closely, I've worked somewhat closely with Frank Chini, who's here in the room, over the last year as a member of council, and extremely closely with Frank over the last four and a half months. When I became far more invested in this conversation as I became mayor, it became clear to me that there were at least, tell me if I'm wrong, Frank, 23 different grants that were open in some way, and for which we did not have good records in terms of our reporting, or whether or not they were still going to be valid, or we had missed deadlines. And I can tell you that Frank has worked his heart out to try and pull all of that record-keeping in to make sure that we are fully compliant. And so while we may not be done being surprised, we are in fact being very proactive, and I have some significant confidence about that. So there will be regular updates, as there already have been for council, about the state of each of those grants. And I just want to say personally, I'm really grateful for the $1 million grant that helped us with the cost of a $5 million water tower.
You will.
Okay, we had a question. Oh, Lori, you want to just...
Yeah, just real quick. So I did want to say that that's why we're not asking for $5 million now. We're asking for up to three because of that grant and because of the ARPA funds. Our struggle is, had the paperwork been done in 2021, '22, '23, and sent when it should have been done, right at the very beginning, and sent to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank, when Mayor Uffer Chase called them in April and said, hey...
I want to get it, Lori.
We're ready. I'm doing it for you. Hey, we're ready. Can you tell us about the, how do we go about getting the bond for the water tower? And they said, what water tower? Because the people in the city manager's office who were doing the grants in '21, '22, '23 did not fill out the paperwork and send it in. That's why we're having to vote on a bridge loan to get us there.
I'll just say, that's a separate grant from the type of grants I was writing.
Understood.
Just to be clear.
That's right.
I just want to be really clear.
Understand.
Jennifer, very quickly, and I want to move us on.
I want to respond to Ms. Grimm. It's my understanding that David Ruh told the city council not to go to the bond bank until the ARPA-funded money was exhausted and the line of credit was exhausted, because otherwise it would be causing taxpayers to be paying interest on money that wasn't needed at that point in time.
But we weren't...
Wait, wait, wait. So this is, Jennifer, please sit down. This is...
I wasn't finished. I got interrupted.
No, I'm asking you, here's why. This is exactly what I don't want to do. I don't want to have a conversation about who didn't send paperwork in or why, nor who gave us advice. What we know is what's important, which is we know that the paperwork was not submitted for whatever reason, and I'm not making any judgments, honestly, about whether or not it should have been. All I'm saying is, the only way forward at this point is that we have to go through the process of applying and qualifying for a loan with the Vermont Bond Bank. And that will take at least until December. And if it does happen in December, the earliest time we will see any income from that is April. And we can't get from October, when the line of credit is due, to April without a loan in anticipation of that bond income. It may take longer than December to qualify, and therefore, we may not see that money until August of next year. That's the only important question before this community right now. So I do not want to go there, I don't want to do the back-and-forth, please. Okay, there was a question in the middle.
I have a question. My name is Sharon Perry. I grew up here in Newport. I taught in Newport City for many, many years, and I'm still here. This is not my world, all this financial stuff. But can we go back to Article 2? In Article 2, am I reading that correctly, that you're also asking for $600,000 that will be going towards the general fund? will be going towards the general fund?
Good question. So what we know is that, right, the line of credit is for $2.4 million.
Yeah.
We don't yet know if we will max that line of credit out as we finish the project, which is happening at Asbury Street, or if we're running a little bit under. But we do know that there has been an amount that I cannot fully define for you right now of spending on the water tower that did not get drawn from the line of credit. So we are in the process of trying to make sure that when we arrange that loan, it's enough to pay back any spending that the general fund did-
Towards the water.
Towards that water tower.
And can I just say that the original, the original bond that was approved by voters not only included the water tower, it also included a cover for-
The reservoir.
For the reservoir and water meters and that system. So it's a-
And it all came out of the general fund? So you're saying maybe about-
Well, we think the general, we think that the general fund covered in the neighborhood of $500,000 of spending on that, those variety of things. The reservoir cover, the water tower itself, the engineering, the land purchase, all of which was worn in 2021.
All right. So basically, though, you're saying that there's a chance that of that $3 million for Article 2, approximately 600,000 of it may go back to the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. Now, when we look at Article 4, we're asking for a million dollars that's going to the general fund because of the sewer water mess-up?
A separate government.
Separate, yeah, okay, got it. Article 3, for the 1.8 million, you are saying that that is going to go directly towards the principal of the 2.7 million that's part of the operating for the line of credit?
That's correct.
Okay. What, have we thought about, or has anybody had a conversation about, taking the 600,000, the 100, the 1 million, and putting that towards the 2.7? So we're not paying interest on all that money?
That's a, it's a very receptive question.
Yeah, and again, it's not my world, so it may be easily explained, I don't know.
I guess the short answer is, the council will have to make decisions about cash flow to ensure that we do not spend beyond our ability to make sure, you know, we don't give money to one thing while we still have outstanding debt or outstanding bills that we have to pay, right? So I can assure you that the council is asking good questions, as is this committee and as is the Water and Sewer Task Force, about how quickly we can make payments on any of this debt so that we aren't servicing interest payments beyond what is necessary. But we've gotta be careful not to pay off so much debt that we then get caught short. So here's just a quick little lesson that I had to learn about that. I thought that a line of credit was always a revolving line of credit. So a year ago, we had a line of credit for, I believe it was $2.8 million, we'd given, been given permission during the year '24, '25 to borrow up to $2.8 million. We borrowed last summer $2.4 million of that. And then when the money started coming in, in the fall, from water and sewer payments and property taxes, primarily property taxes, we did what I thought was the responsible thing, and our treasurer went down to the bank and paid back a million dollars of that loan, which seemed totally reasonable to me. Because I thought, okay, when we need it, if we need to go back and borrow that money, now it'll be, that loan, that line of credit has been paid down. That's not actually how it works. It's not, it's not a revolving line. So you can only borrow as a total during the year of, in that instance, $2.8 million. And that means that even though we had paid it down and we only owed 1.4, we eventually borrowed another 400,000. And we, at that point, we only had $50,000 left that we could borrow against, even though we only owed 1.8 million on a $2.8 million line of credit. Does that make sense? It was, it was flattergasting to me. Like I didn't, it never occurred to me that a loan might work that way, but that's standard operating procedure for municipal borrowing on a line of credit for cash flow purposes.
Right. And I get it. It's just, you know, you're, we're asking for 3.4 million-
Yes.
On top of what we already have with taxes-
Yes.
In a kind of, you know, an area where we don't have a huge tax base other than-
Yeah.
Property taxes. So I was just wondering if there's some way to try to get that 3.4 million down. And that's the only thing I-
From your lips to God's ears, and Task Force members, I hope you're listening to, because I think that's a high priority. Pam?
Pam, that's Newport. Because I film all these meetings, every single one of them.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah. I get asked questions. And one of the questions that keeps coming around is about legal redress, that I've been asked, isn't there insurance? Because a lot of cities have insurance, that if the right criteria are met, can be used, is there a legal response to this? Because I haven't heard us discuss it at all at any point. Has there been any discussion that I-
Not that I've had.
Slap through?
Many of the members of the Task, I mean, we haven't talked about it at a Task Force meeting, and the council's not disgusted. Maybe we should. It's certainly worth asking that question, I don't know. I've never asked that question myself, of our attorneys or anyone else, so it's worth asking. We have a question way in the back, please first.
My name's Mike Land, I'm in Newport, that's about 48 years. And I know you don't wanna point fingers, okay, fine. But, you know, when there are mistakes been made for 10 years, 12 years, whatever, you've gotta realize who's really responsible for a certain thing that they should have discovered, like that income not coming from the state is extra money. Well, no, that, somebody should know, knows the mayor or the council or clerk treasurer, whatever. So you gotta, you gotta know who is responsible for certain things. Wherever you work, wherever, when you work at a place, when something goes wrong and it's in your department, is it your responsibility to know what's going on, or is it someone in the office calling shots? No. The person that's there, you gotta know who it is. I know you don't wanna point fingers, but you gotta know who's really accountable to the problem, you know? That's all I can say.
That's a really great point. And I'll just point you all in the FAQ to the section that the Task Force wrote that specifically says, these are the responsibilities of the following people, the mayor, the members of council, the clerk treasurer, and I think I had somebody else in that list, or we had someone else in that list. Because we absolutely need to be clear about who is responsible. Oh, the city manager, of course. What are the responsibilities of each of those people and every of those positions, right? So that's exactly why it's there, because we need to be really clear about who's responsible for what. And there's no doubt in my mind that mayor and council, at the end of the day, are ultimately responsible, particularly on matters of budget and finance. So that's why we're taking this so seriously as a council.
Rick, can I, I'll ask, if there's one person in the group that is blessed with ignorance, it's me, because I'm so new here. And that makes me incredibly reluctant to point fingers, name names, until I'm thoroughly convinced that really someone, it really lies with them. It doesn't mean that I don't agree with that, but I'm also just reluctant to try, you know, name names just so that we can name, you know, put something out there, put a face on it, put a person on it. I feel it's, in the list of things that we all want to accomplish, at least provide some culpability, but there's things that come in priority before we can do that.
My point is, I know you don't wanna name names, fine. But you gotta know where the responsibility lies.
I agree.
You gotta know who's responsible for raising the sewer rates or raising the taxes. You gotta know who should be really responsible. And I don't care, you don't wanna name names, it's fine. But you gotta have people, you have, you're, you just gotta know who, what the responsibility is.
Yeah. And that's the sewer account, the sewer group, I mean, that's part of what we're doing is trying to make sure we're responsible for that. And, you know, I mean, I think all of us have invested in it, so. You've got a receptive audience. Let's put it that way. I think what I hear compared to what has transpired in the past, is there's a receptive audience that wants to do.
Go ahead, Susan.
I'm Robert Perry. I've lived here in Newport forever. With the $600,000 loan that's coming out, you mentioned something about water meters, some of that being used for water meters. If water meters were mandatory throughout the city, would that be much easier to balance a budget and to fix a budget for the water and sewer repair?
Boy, I got a task force for you. Yeah. That's exactly right. And so actually, I'm really glad you brought it up because someone said earlier something that made me wanna go deeper here a little bit. I think it was actually Sharon, Sharon, Sharon?
Sharon.
Sharon. I wanna be, the Water and Sewer Task Force has been meeting every Thursday night at 6:30 almost every week lately, the last couple of meetings every other week. And among many things that they are wrestling with is how we complete a water meter installation project that has now been going on for at least 15 years in this community. It started somewhere around 2009 or 10, 11, somewhere back there, right? So we're talking 14, 15 years. And at this point, 58% of the water meters for residential customers have been installed in this community. We have roughly 1,800 meter, uh, 1,800 water customers at the residential level, and of those, roughly 1,100 now have meters. There's all, that means that we've still got about 700 or maybe even as many as 800 meters left to install. And we've gone around and around and around in circles about how to take care of that because it has been the city's commitment to date to make those installations happen at the city's expense and not at a customer's expense. We are, in some instances, there have been people in the community who have requested a water meter and it was never installed. Lack of capacity to actually do the work, or who knows what, lack of money to buy the equip, to buy the materials, for whatever reason, some people have asked for a water meter and it didn't get installed. There are some people who have been asked, can we have insurance to try and install a water meter, who have been unresponsive to date, right? And there are some who have just missed it, it just hasn't been a part of their consciousness. All, all three of those categories need to be responded to as fast as we possibly can. We must get as quickly as possible to the place where everyone has a water meter because until we do that, there is no discernible, entirely fair and equitable way to establish water rates. It's just, it's gonna be an inexact guessing game until everyone is working from the same deck. So to that end, it looks possible, this is not a commitment, it's a guess, but it looks possible that the water meter tower, sorry, the water tower project will come in somewhat under budget. And the current thinking that I and members of the Water and Sewer Task Force have been doing on Thursday nights is that if that happens, we will still take the full amount that we've been given permission to borrow from the voters and use that chunk of money to buy a bunch of water meters and have our own staff as a city install them in the most cost efficient way possible. We've looked at hiring a company to come in, and I won't play with numbers because they're not right on the top of my head, but the cost is exponentially greater if we don't do the work ourselves. So the good news is, we are in the process of finishing up the Causeway project, the new traffic light system on the Causeway, and the water tower project. And the, our director of public works, Tom Bernier, assures us that it will be possible to actually redeploy some of our staff in public works to do these installations. So to get us started, the Water and Sewer Task Force has asked, and council, I don't know that we've even talked about this yet on council, so we may not have gotten to that point yet, but we intend for council to consider saying, we have $50,000 in this year's budget that we know we could take right now and dedicate to buying the first 75 to 100 meters and the related equipment, materials that have to go into each one. They're gonna cost us about $500 apiece, or a little bit less or a little bit more depending on the situation. So our goal right now is to see if our own staff could show us how quickly they can install water meters if that's all a team of two is doing. How many can they do in a week? And how quickly can we install them? And can we get those first 75 or 100 knocked out in the next couple of months? By which time, we will have the final numbers on the water tower, and we will know if there's money there that we can then dedicate and say, now let's just go whole hog on this, let's do it as fast as we can and see how many more we can get put in in the coming year.
So for those people that won't allow you to install a water meter, can you adjust their water or sewer rates high enough to really encourage them to put a meter in?
One of the things that they're looking at under the Water and Sewer Task Force is, we're doing a careful review of the ordinance that governs- Exactly those questions. What happens around noncompliance? What happens when somebody doesn't pay their bill or doesn't allow access? So the water, I don't, I'm not prepared to speak to that tonight because we have a ways to go, but it's absolutely part of the conversation. And I suspect that we will have some kind of a penalty involved if people in the end say, I don't want that, and you can't make me put it in. Right? There will be, there will be not just a carrot, but you can have a free water meter, but also a stick, here's what happens if you don't allow us to put it in. Go ahead, Lori.
I also attend every single one of the Water and Sewer meetings because it's very important. And the one thing, there's a couple of things that we need to know. If you've paid any attention at all, typically what's happened is the installation of the water meter actually brings down the individual cost of water for the person. So what does that do? That leaves us with less revenue, obviously, but in the, in the end, what we'll be able to tell is where are our water losses? And because most water systems have, I don't know, like 13, 14% water loss, we don't know what ours is technically because we're, we don't have meters on every, on every property. So, so that's, that's a couple of things. And yes, the idea is to make the water meters mandatory in the city. We have to, because in many cases, to borrow money against our water system, a lot of these things, everybody says, you have to have water meters in order for us to give you money for, for part of your water system. The other thing the voters need to know is that one of the things that the Water and Sewer Task Force did do is, water rates have already, are already going up. Jim, is it June, July, August billed in September, is that right?
It's in the September billing.
Yeah. So with the September billing, the rates are already going up. And in that billing is included the, the debt service-
No, on the water tower.
On the water tower, yes. On the water tower, for the bond for the water tower. So-
But not, just to be clear about the alternate, the other side of that, the debt service for the $1 million loan is not yet included because we don't know, one, we don't have permission to borrow it, and two, we don't, we don't know exactly what the terms will be in. So there would have to be yet another adjustment to the sewer rates if, if the voters approve this loan.
Right. So the, the-
I'm gonna have to go to Derby to wash my truck.
Say that again?
What's that?
What'd you say, Robert?
I'm gonna have to go to Derby to wash my truck.
Yeah, you got it. Borrow a friend's water in Derby.
So that, so that is the thing to understand, is that the, the water, the water rate has already been increased to cover the bond that was approved in 2021. It's, the money is already, you know, gonna be earned for that, so.
Thank you, Lori.
Well, I mean, it's fair that you have a water meter, you pay for your usage. I mean, I'm all for that, I have no problem with that, but I just feel that there's a gray area with those that aren't metered. You have no real way to really charge them fairly or properly.
We agree entirely. The Water and Sewer Task Force has literally spun in circles over a period of numerous meetings trying to sort out exactly how you do this. And the answer is, there's no good way to do it until we finish the metering process.
And not just to say, not everybody who's not metered is on city water. There are some of us who have to have our own water, we're up too high, the city can't supply us. So just because we're not metered doesn't mean we're on city water. Just to be clear.
Fair enough. We're talking about people using city water.
Exactly. So that's why I would just ask Lori to say, instead of mandatory for the city of Newport, water meters, say mandatory for those on city water.
That's fair enough. Yeah, that's fair enough. See, I'm on city water but not city sewer.
Right. I have no fire protection at my house because the city water lines don't run up that far. And so it's whatever comes on the truck, so I'm very happy we have a new truck coming.
Hold on, Mark, let me see, is anybody else have other questions? I did not give instructions to keep the air conditioning off tonight, just so you all know, I wasn't trying to heat us out here, but it is getting warm, and we've been going at it a little over an hour and a half, so we'll take a few more questions. Let's do Mark and then Jennifer.
Mark from Newport. I, I had a water, I pay water and sewer, right? And then last winter, I think I told a top, you, I hooked my water pipe in the backyard, they had a, Fred had a dig underneath. Why did I have to pay for that $1,089 if I paid water and sewer?
It's a great question.
Why did I have to?
The city-
I'm sorry, I paid off.
Go ahead, Jennifer, you want to answer that question? Jennifer's our expert.
Not really.
And a member of the Water and Sewer Task Force.
Jennifer's a member of Water and Sewer, yes, resident of Newport. From the curb stop to your house is unfortunately on you.
Okay.
So obviously, where the line broke was between the curb stop, which is the main water line, and your house. It's your feeding line.
It's our.
And it is, it is a problem. And one, one other thing, when we were talking water and sewer rates, one thing has a fact, Lori, is when you get metered, it comes down that we find out there's less use. And no matter what, we're looking at a rate increase on top of the rate increase we've just put in, without seeing the effect of the rate increase. When we flow those numbers, we didn't quite make the projections we were anticipating. And so I think as taxpayers, you've got to realize for a long time, we're going to be playing with our families, we're going to be adding meters as we can, you know, and we've looked for various funding on it. The problem is, funding is debt service. Funding is, again, we're going out for borrowing. You can't, you can't borrow. And at some point, yeah, there is a problem. At what point do we exceed our capability as taxpayers and pay for anything?
So just to be clear, city council has a responsibility to examine every quarter. We have the responsibility to examine our income and expense in those water and sewer budgets and our financial reports. And if they are not going the way we need them to, it's our responsibility to adjust them appropriately, to make sure that at the end of the year, we finish dead even or in the black.
Right. So on the same note, as you were saying, that we may have to pay rate increase after rate increase, just to make sure that we're covering everything, but if everybody's metered and we're all paying an equal amount.
We're in a level playing field. That's exactly right.
We'll make it. And yes, we have discussed penalties for, you know, non-metered people. We did do an adjustment for all of you guys. Some of you people are going to see an effect in your latest bill that's going to come out, that we adjusted, because the rate increase on the sewer for non, you know, metered sewer people was 28%. And so when we did our rate increase, we adjusted back to making that the same as everybody else, which is about 8% for metered, and then raised it up. So some people are making a major jump in those rates, and some are just paying, some are paying $30 more, some people are going to pay $5 and $10 more. So it is, it is an interesting thing. So as soon as we get through that, we'll be better able to deal with the ones that aren't metered, can more meters help.
And just to be clear, in my judgment, trying to figure it out from kind of the newcomer's perspective, most people who do not have meters have not, are not in that situation, because they made a choice not to incur it. So that's, there may be some people who have been kind of noncompliant, but the vast majority of the people without meters at this point are because we, as a community, as a city, have not been responsible in the follow-through necessary to make sure that the meters were available for them. Okay. Mark, I'm going to close this down shortly, so I'm going to take a question from Jennifer Beerling. Go ahead, Jennifer.
I just wanted to comment, actually, on a couple of things. The first is that water meters in Newport, for those that are on city water, is mandatory. That quote took place during COVID, it was a Zoom meeting. So it is a mandatory decision of the council that water meters are mandatory. The stumbling point is getting them installed.
Right. What I meant was, her language didn't include mandatory for those on.
No, 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 I was looking at this, Jennifer. Now you care.
Sorry.
I wasn't looking at you. I'm just saying that it's mandatory.
You just have the misfortune of sitting directly behind him.
Right. It's an issue of getting them installed, is what it was.
The second comment that I wanted to make is in response, and I forget your name, Mr. New Resident?
Hal.
Hal, okay. When you were talking about putting this debt out for long term, and we can always pay it off early if we want to. My understanding of bonds, if you guys go in the direction of bonds, is that they effectively have an implied prepayment penalty. Because when you take a bond out, whatever the total amount of the interest that's due on that bond is what you have to pay. So even if you pay it off early, you don't get the benefit of avoiding that additional interest. So if you're looking at setting up this long-term debt in such a way that you have a feeling, for lack of a better term, that you might be paying it off early, I would ask you to really make some prudent choices as to whether or not you're going in the direction of a bond or a note with a bank, because a note with a bank, you would be able to save that interest, and on a bond, you're not going to be able to. So the decision-making now could really end up saving taxpayers some money. Otherwise, even if we pay it off early, it's not saving taxpayers money, we're still going to pay that interest no matter what.
Thank you. We will absolutely ask that question. And, go ahead, you said you had some questions for the end, so go ahead.
Well, I'll shorten it down to one. One comment. Someone suggested that, you know, the city manager, hiring the city manager is so important, and that it would take care of a lot of the problems that we have. But I do just want to remind people that for the decade in which we are now saying we've had problems, we also had city managers who allegedly had some financial skills, and yet, yet the problems occurred. So it is really important that the person that we hire in the future for either a city manager or a person that does some of those skills and is called something else is fantastic.
Understood. And about that, you know, plenty of people, I get two immediate questions whenever someone finds me on the street. Mister Mayor, what about the pit? That's question number one. And question number two, how come you haven't hired a city manager yet? And I'll just say about that, that the council has had that conversation in public, and we've agreed that our priorities were, one, to get our financial house in order and make sure that we are, we have a spending plan for this current fiscal year that we can, in which we can meet our obligations and not, and not go into deficit spending. And we are working on that, and I expect we'll have those answers, as I said earlier, by the end of the first quarter. And two, that we wanted to hire someone in the position that we've now hired for, called the Finance and Office Administrator, as quickly as possible to begin to take some of the immediate pressure for support off staff and council. And we've hired for that position. That person will start on the 25th of August. So you can expect that if we can answer those questions about the city's actual financial situation for this year, that we will then turn to a conversation about when and how we can go about looking for a city manager. I don't expect that we'll be looking at a person filling this position, because I've been through these kinds of hiring processes before, that we'll have someone in place, certainly any earlier than the beginning of the new year, the new calendar year. And I wouldn't be surprised if it took us until sometime toward the end of this fiscal year before we managed to do it. But we will, we are, we are not avoiding it, because we don't think we should have a city manager. I don't, I think I speak for the council when I say that. That's my, I've been hearing from council members too, we're anxious for that conversation. And we will be leading to it as soon as we fiscally, as soon as we can do so prudently in terms of our fiscal responsibility. Any final comments or questions? Dave, and then we're going to wrap up tonight.
Dave LaFors, I will go, Dave LaFors, Dave LaFors. I just want to say thank you to all you guys for all the work you've done in such a short amount of time. It's pretty miraculous of everything that you've discovered, and I just appreciate your volunteerism and dedication to the community, so. Thank you.
Thanks. I know that I'm speaking on behalf of all the Task Force members, and Andrew and Kevin from council, when I say that they will stay as late as any of you want to, to have a conversation with you individually. And there's food back here that we do not want to take to somebody's home, so please eat some food, and if you have questions, kind of engage any of us, and we're happy to talk. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Oh, one last thing. If you have a friend or a neighbor who you think wants more conversation about this, have the conversation with them, and help us to interpret what the issues are on this ballot, and to make sure that people have good information. Please do that for us. Mike?
I have one more question. Same area, but that, what path? No, okay, we're good path. What, how high you got a tax break and what?
Ah, there it is. I thought we were going to get through the evening without that question, Mike.
That's a big question?
Yeah, it's a great question. It's going to depend pretty much entirely on the, the answer to, the, the answer to the question is going to depend on how long we take to service that debt. And I can give you some very rough numbers that I would ask not to be held accountable for at this stage, because we don't have exact numbers. But I'll give you our best guess. First of all, I'll say, I don't have the numbers on the $1 million on the sewer side and what that will do to our budget, our, our rates. I'll, Water and Sewer Task Force are going to have to work that one out. But if you take a, in round numbers, not 1.8 million, but just call it $2 million, and you borrow money at, let's say, 6% interest, I can tell you what it would do to a home that's appraised at $200,000 on our grand list. If you borrowed that money over 20 years, you'd be looking at a $108 increase in your bill, and this is not exact, but roughly $108 in your bill every year for the next 20 years, if we borrow that money over 20 years. If we borrow that money for 15 years, that same $200,000 value on the grand list would equate to a $136 increase per year in your, in your tax bill. If we borrow it over 10 years, it equates on that same $200,000 on the grand list to $164 per year. And if we did it in five years, this is a little bit foggy here, I don't have the exact number, but it probably will come in somewhere in the neighborhood of $300 additional if we did it on that $200,000 value over five years to pay it off. We have not talked at all yet on the Task Force, nor has the council had any conversation about what the terms of that note should be. So all we're really asking for in this election, in this ballot initiative, is permission to negotiate whatever we think we can manage up to 20 years, and then we'll come back and try and work with our bank. And PISUMSEC has already basically said, if we're talking about, if this ballot initiative is passed, that is, the two ballot initiatives are 1.8 million for the general fund and 1 million for the sewer fund, that PISUMSEC is willing to have a conversation with us about those terms and to, they've already effectively said, we're willing to talk with you and to work that loan out. So that gives you a rough idea of what we're talking about here. And please, if you do the math and I come out a little bit wrong, educate me politely, because I'm still trying to figure it out myself. Frank and Lori, and then we're going to wrap up. Yeah, it might be useful if you let everybody know what the alternative to.
Yeah.
Oh, good question. You want to sneak it out, Lori? Go ahead.
Yeah, because it's, it's not. We, we did get counsel. The fact is that if these, if we do not pass the 1.8 and the 1, just the deficit, remember that the, the other is already approved, the fire truck and the water tower are already approved. But if we don't pass it, then we are actually required by state statute to pay it off in one year. So, and we have to do it in increments of 5%. But in the conversation I had with Chip earlier is, yeah, we could say we'll pay off, you know, 90% or 70%, but we're just going to pay it off 100%, because that's really what we have to do. And that would be very difficult.
So that same bill, that, that $200,000 value of, you know, your home on the grand list, if we had to pay it all off in one year, the tax hit would be about $1,100. So that's, that gives you a sense of where we are.
We're not, we really aren't trying to scare anybody, but we have to, we have to tell people, you know, that's, that is what happens. And again, I always just want to remind people, the voters have already approved the 3 million for the water tower and the 800,000 for the, for the fire truck. It's already been approved. We came back to get us to that point, so we can get that money. So those have already been approved. It's just the extra 75, if we, if we need up to 75, and the bridge loan for the 300 to get us to the bond that has already been approved.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody. If you want to come to Task Force meetings, they are worn on the events page on the homepage of the city website, and anyone is welcome.